Please stand for the pledge and the prayer.
Pledge of allegiance.
To the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, in the visible, liberty, justice for all.
Still stay standing for the prayer.
Dear Heavenly Father, we just thank you for this opportunity that we have to come together and do the work of the people of this great county that we live in. We thank you for that opportunity. We thank you for the freedom that we have to do that. We would ask that you just help us, Lord, help our country right now. Tomorrow will be potentially one of the most divisive days in the history of our country. We just ask, take this country in your hands and you watch over it, protect it, help us, help it to be a free and fair election, what we ask for and what we need. Know that you will and that you can. Our sons in the name that we pray.
Alrighty. Any special announcements or recognitions? I don't believe we have any. No. Moving on, approval of last month's meeting.
Still moved.
I'll second that. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Approved. Formal reports will start out with auditor, human resources, suggest increased care and or timekeeping.
Good evening. Jessica and I are requesting to term our agreement with Write Stuff Software for our timekeeping and move to attendance on demand. They integrate directly with our payroll system, so it will help us contain some payroll errors and reduce those. The annual cost is exactly the same as what we are currently paying to Write Stuff. There will be an initial setup fee of $50,500 to make the switch, but Jessica and I both feel that it will greatly benefit the county to move to this new timekeeping system. So we are here today to get the agreement signed.
Has Alan looked at it?
Alan has reviewed it and approved it.
Alright, I'll make the motion to accept that. I will second that. Favors say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Signature.
Yes.
Alright, moving on, Purdue Extension Allison Hillis. Allison's right here.
Yep. I'm Allison Hillis, County Extension Director with Purdue Extension. So I am going to be presenting our contractual services agreement for 2025. This is the same thing that we've had for many years, basically saying that the county agrees to help out Purdue Extension with some different things and what Purdue Extension will do for the county. So can I present it? And then I'll just give you a brief update while you're looking it over.
Fine, yeah. Okay.
So we're working, you know, right now with Purdue Extension. We just had a meeting today because we've all kind of been all over the place with the HHS and the A and R educator. There, the A and R educator, Ag and Natural Resources, is working to get a sprayer clinic set up with Klevna Implement. So that is completely above my head, but I'm really glad that we've got different areas of expertise. So he's going to be doing that in January. He's working with a state committee to get chicken embryology developed into a statewide program, which is pretty cool. So I love that he's taking the lead in that. And I know that that was a topic of conversation a while back of, you know, which almost, which came first, the chicken or the egg? But looking at how does the life cycle of the egg go? As HHS, I'm working a lot with food insecurity, looking at how do I spread education surrounding cooking, health, nutritious food, that sort of thing, and even accessibility to food or affordability pieces. And then our 4H educator, who's now about six months into her role, is really looking forward to digging in and doing some more programming. Last week, we held a STEM day, so science, technology, engineering, and math for about half of the eighth grade class out of Northwestern, while the other half was on their DC trip. And that was just a really great day for them to be out at the fairgrounds with us for different parts of education, but yet also some fun, so.
Nice.
Yeah.
You've been busy.
Yes, very much so.
So Alan, be a motion for this?
I'd make that motion to accept the 2025 agreement.
I'll second it. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Approved.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you.
Next, maintenance department, Mr. Stone Street.
Good afternoon, and if I may, I'd like to do the handicap door openers first.
Sure.
I have two quotes from Stanley Access Technologies to do the Kinsey Youth Center and the Howard County Jail to install two door openers, one for each door as you enter. So it would be a total of four door openers for this cost. The jail's $6,900. The Kinsey Youth Center is $7,250. So for a total cost of $14,150, I can do both buildings. I would like to pay for this from Coomcat Building Repair, 1138.47241. And I do have permission from the sheriff and Kathy Colson to do so.
The first time that a quote's been hired at Kinsey Youth Jail. I'm just kidding. It was, I was trying to be funny.
Trying to be funny?
I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That's passed.
The next is, the big one is the heat pump project at the jail, which encompasses a lot of things. It includes condensing boilers, make-up air units, additional fill for our cooling tower, variable frequency dry pumps for the fluid systems, and of course, 70 heat pumps. We'll be utilizing water furnace equipment along with some, of course, camus boilers and Armstrong pumps. The total cost for the project's $2,419,920, and that is installed. I would like to include an additional $30,000 for ceiling repair. As we get into this, we're going to damage some ceilings. So for a total cost of $2,449,920, we can do this project. I asked to take it under advisement. You don't have to do that. We've worked and worked and worked and worked this problem. I feel comfortable where we're at. It includes the new refrigerants. It's a new, the new product that we haven't used before. It comes very highly rated and recommended, and it's built in Fort Wayne, Indiana. The discount, the procurement discounts via the Wilson Learning Center, which is right here in Indiana as well, Quality Heating and Plumbing is going to be doing the installation. So none of this money is even going further than 100 miles. I think this is the way to go.
Bill, if they approve this, when would they first?
I don't know. Clay is here. He would have a better idea. He's, he will be the lead engineer on this project.
I think. Alright, thank you.
If you have any questions at all, we'd be glad to answer them the best we can.
I feel like I've kind of slowed this program down a little bit. I had a lot of questions about it. I think Bill's made him work very hard for this, do some things. At this moment, at this moment, I'll make the motion to accept this.
I'll second it. All favors say aye.
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 Thank you very, very much, and we'll do the best job we can for you.
Worked hard, I know you. Thanks, Bill.
Thank you very much.
Next, Hurricane Recorder Tori Kelly.
How's it going? I just have four Laredo agreements for you guys to go over, so.
Same as always, right? Alan's looked them over.
It's the same, yeah.
Yes. I'll make the motion to accept the four Laredo agreements.
Second.
Orders office.
All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. That is passed. Signatures for you. Thanks. Thanks, Tori.
Thank you.
Next, Hurricane Highway, Amber Toll.
I have three items for you tonight. I'll do the two easiest ones first, I think. So this first one is a highway safety policy approval. So what this is, is a written safety policy that the highway department is trying to undertake. This is nothing new. There's nothing extraordinary on this. This is a policy that we have verbally expressed to all of our guys and gals, and we go over this as they come in as new employees. We have safety meetings at least twice a year, usually more. We go over some of these items. But this is just an actual written policy that we would like all the employees to read through and sign, so that it's just kind of something in writing that we understand what the safety policy is and we understand how we all need to abide by that. So since this is something that the employees need to sign and agree to, we need to bring it in front of the commissioners for approval. Alan reviewed this, and then I also worked with Carrie through HR as well to develop this policy, so we'd like to get some approval.
Those are my questions. Okay. I move to approve.
I'll second it. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Alright. My second item I'm going to go through is the BLN contract. Actually, BLN is EJIS now. So this is a supplemental agreement to our Bridge 56 project. It's a federally funded project. It is currently in the NDOT process right now for final approval. That project will go to bid in January. In order to get it to that point, we had to do one more last minute environmental check that NDOT required us to do before we could get it across that line to get it in NDOT's hands. So in order to do that, BLN, EJIS, had to hire a sub to do that actual environmental assessment. They had to be a qualified person to do that assessment.
Do you know the, what's the road coordinates on that bridge?
Yeah, it's 300 East, just south of Sycamore. Yep. So northeast corner there. So the total of this cost with the sub and with EJIS, BLN on top of that is $16,100, which is a pretty decent price for what we had to do. So I would just like to go ahead and get the approval for that supplemental.
Make the motion.
Second. All favors say aye.
Aye.
Aye. And? Both.
And my last item is I'd like to open and record all of our annual bid items. So this is the 2025 annual bid items. So I just need to read these into record. So this is E and B paving for bituminous materials. Very exciting watching the open mail, I know. Sorry about that. E and B paving for tack materials. And this is Martin Marietta for stone. And this is IMI for stone as well. And this is Keystone Cooperative for our diesel fuel. And this is Ward Stone, the Tipton Quarry, for our stone items. This is E and B paving for HMA pavement. Harder than others. This is asphalt materials for tack. This is asphalt materials for it's going to be for HMA materials. Almost done. This is Heidelberg materials for stone. Should be the last one. This is milestone contractors for bridge materials. And that is everybody. So I would like to review these and bring it in front of the board next commissioners' meeting with all the bid tabs and the official award at that point. And that's all I have.
I would make a motion to take those under advisement.
I'll second that. All favors say aye.
Aye.
They are under advisement until next meeting. Thank you, Amber.
Thank you.
Thanks, Amber.
Alright, next we have Kinsey Youth Center Kathy Colson.
Good afternoon, everybody. The Kinsey Youth Center is 31 years old. It is in need of some repair and attention. And while I have had appropriate budgets, we have been operating at 50% capacity and 50%, under 50% staffing, which means that there is overage. So I have money left. With that, I would like to address those repairs that need to be done. We have a parking lot that is 31 years old. It has had some patching, some repair. It has been sealed, but at this point, we have significant puddling. We can see the ground through it. It's checked, and it has lots of large cracks. It is kind of rough to even drive across. We have sections where trucks come in to go to our loading dock, and that area has to be completely redone. With that in mind, the first person I, of course, call is our resident expert, Amber Toll, or Ms. Toll. So with that in mind, she has given me the, a bid from E and B paving for 2024. The total expense to do this project is $92,500. We did utilize both the maintenance department and the Howard County Highway Department to do the area in front of our new garage. So that would be a deduction. However, this bid was from June. So I do anticipate that with materials, et cetera, it will increase, so I would like to go with the original bid. This is just a proposal, so we will be going, I will ask her to help me go back and get a more accurate bid that can be signed off on. What that's going to require is transferring money from youth managers payroll, which is the 50% capacity that I have been working with, and moving it to building and structural repairs.
I'm sure the council appreciates the fact that trying to help them. Last year, you did the building project and so forth. Auditor, would she, so she, you can't encumber money without it being actually bid.
They have to have a bill or something. It can't just.
Request an invoice.
Yeah, we would have to have an invoice stating the exact amount.
So wouldn't you, would you expect this project to be done?
Thoughts?
Because it's probably not open now, right?
The plan will continue to open until December around the 1st. So if they have time, a room, they're scheduled, we could get some of that work done this year, depending on weather. Certainly get some things done if we were. Who is sort of the casting job.
So you, okay. Just trying to figure this out, because by the time you get in front of the council, you'll be at the end of the month.
Absolutely.
And by then, it's probably almost too late.
It certainly would be, they have to wait till the end of the year. We'd have to have the transfer for Friday. So that we, like, never mind. It'd be a transfer, not an additional.
I will do whatever.
Is it a transfer?
It is going to be a transfer from youth managers payroll to building and structure repair.
So actually, it's call me tomorrow.
Absolutely.
Yeah.
That'd be great.
Well, I would make the motion to proceed. Yeah, absolutely.
I'll second that.
It's a big project, so I wanted to.
Yeah, do what you can. I understand weather and.
Absolutely.
Yeah. Big factor.
So that passed.
Thank you.
Thanks, Kathy. Alright, and under new business, we have, first of all, Allison Norman, Food Access Alliance Director. There she is.
I have some sheets of the work we've been doing, and I can share these with you all?
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you for the introduction. I'm Allison, and I'm the director of the Food Access Alliance, which is an organization that is partially funded by the county, so I wanted to come and give you all an update of the work that we've been doing for the past year. I was hired on the objectives of a consulting firm that came in to measure the pervasiveness of food insecurity throughout Howard County. And from those objectives, we created this document of objectives that I needed to complete over the course of my contract. And we've been working towards those for the past year. The right column, which is highlighted, is the updates that we've had throughout the past year. I partner with Allison Hillis and Purdue Extensions on a lot of educational programming about food insecurity. We started a food prescription program with the Health Department, which was launched this past month that is in full swing, and we've given out hundreds of pounds of food to food insecure households for individuals facing diabetes as well. I'm going to go through this pretty quickly. So on the second page where it says objective two, we're working with Food Finder's Food Bank, which is the food bank that services Howard County, to increase the number of mobile food pantries that are in Howard County. We used to have four. We're currently down to one. And at our last meeting, Sheryl Graham with the United Way is working with us to get volunteers to host and to help us look for sponsors for these programs, because it's over $2,000 for each mobile pantry. But they give out thousands of pounds of food to Howard County residents every time they come, so we don't want to lose that service.
This has, this doesn't have anything to do with the churches that volunteered?
No, it's, it's money. So the churches are all still willing to participate. We just have to find organizations that will pay for the food and pay for the mobile pantry service to come here. Food Finder's pays their employees to drive out here and to help coordinate that program. All of our churches that were hosting mobile pantries are still open to doing so. We just need some corporate sponsorship. So that's what we're looking for right now. Subheading two is our SNAP coordinator. We hired a SNAP coordinator off a grant that I wrote to a community foundation. She is currently on a two-year contract with the opportunity to extend to three years. I did not find a SNAP coordinator through FSSA, because most FSSA employees are focused on approving and denying applications and not working directly with individuals applying for assistance. So there was a gap in how people learned what they did wrong when they submitted their applications and they were denied. They could tell you it was denied, no one was going to sit down with you, tell you why, and figure out how to fix it. So we have a SNAP coordinator that will help individuals walk through the program, not just SNAP, but she can do WIC, TANF, Medicaid, all public assistance programs. The Food Pantry Collaborative, I meet with our food pantries on a quarterly basis. Our next meeting is on the 12th, and it will be at the Salvation Army. Most of our food pantries are out of churches, so having a pastor help lead those meetings helps to keep the food pantries engaged and make the meetings worthwhile for them. If they can talk about mission, if they can talk about why they're serving people through food, they find that they're more worthwhile, more worth their time, especially because they're all volunteers and they're all spending a lot of time already getting food out into the community for our communications plan. We also hired, we being myself, Family Service Association, and the Minority Health Alliance, hired a marketing person. So she will be helping me disseminate information about this program, because not a lot of people know that exists. And she'll also help me coordinate a large-scale food drive next year for our food pantries. Currently, they're doing the Letter Carriers Food Drive, and last year, they didn't get the turnout that they were hoping for, so we're going to drum up some ideas on how we can change that, possibly do a different program so that they can get more food. The food pantry list is through the United Way, and we have QR codes that we hand out to organizations so that people can access those. Howard County app, we decided not to invest in an app, because it was going to cost a lot of money, and there's no reason to develop an app if we don't need one. So we are hoping to partner with FSSA to be on their website. We have social media pages if you're interested. It's Howard County Food Access Alliance on Instagram and Facebook. For our long-term feeding plan, I am currently working with Greentown to have a community conversation about food insecurity, because Heartland Market just closed, and they don't have a grocery store. They have Dollar General, which has a 10-foot cooler that has fresh foods in it, but that's only stocked about two days a week. They get their food on Thursday. By Saturday, the food is gone. And there is a pocket of food insecurity in Greentown that we're trying to reach to understand why they're facing food insecurity and what we can do to help them. I'm having a little bit more trouble finding someone in Rusheville to partner with, but I have received the contact information for the director of turnabout from a member of my board, so I'll be reaching out to him directly to see if he'll partner and help me a little bit with that. For grant writing, we've done several grants in this past year. We got a land grant for a community garden over on East Havens. It was two single home lots for the expansion of our community garden network. I also got a grant for tools and supplies for that community garden from the United Way. The Collaborative Resource Coordination Pilot Program Grant is the grant that pays for our new SNAP coordinator. The Marketing Director Grant, the person helping us expand our programming and disseminate information. And I wrote a grant to the United Way to fund the Food is Medicine Program for the perishable and non-perishable food items. That program partners health education and access to food, and the food is the most costly part of that program, so we needed a funding partner for that. I'm exploring grants with two grocers who are hoping to move into Kokomo, into our north side neighborhood to mediate the food desert up here, so that we can get those going more quickly. They're large-scale projects that cost a lot of money, and these small business owners are going to need a little bit of help. So we're looking at planning grants to pay for a financial planner. to pay for a financial planner and someone to help them put together their business plan.
Do you have actual physical location of this?
One of the grocers is looking at the CVS on Morgan. We're trying to get ahold of the person who currently owns that property. It looked like Veritas owned it, but it looks like it might have swapped hands. So we're still pinning down who exactly owns that property and if they'd be interested in breaking the lease that they currently have at Dollar General. Because Dollar General has been sitting on that property for over a year and hasn't developed it. And our other grocer does not have their site secured, but they are working with a corporation who is looking to donate a building in this downtown area. And that brings us to objective five, which is the physical grocery store access. I'm working with two grocers who possibly want to open up in the north side of Kokomo. I'm trying to get one of them to move to the south end because we also have a pocket of food insecurity. A large-scale food desert, I should say, down on the south end of town. I have not successfully gotten either of them to want to move to that south end, but I am still working on that. For grocery delivery and pickup, I know that Kroger does free delivery with a Kroger subscription. An opportunity to expand, that would be a grant. But we would have to find people who want to use grocery delivery service and a lot of older adults who are the population we'd be trying to reach with that program do not like grocery delivery services. So that's the barrier we're hitting with that. And that is my update.
I remember, I remember when this started. It was about two and a half years ago and I believe Mr. Dodd goes to most of those meetings on our behalf. And I used to go and I didn't feel that was necessary and I don't, not sure that both of us could have went. How much food have we delivered this year? I mean, do we have, have we delivered food this year?
This program coordinates county-wide services for food. I don't do a lot of direct client services. I support our food pantries who do direct client services and I do have the information on how much food they deliver. When I'm writing grants, people don't want to write grants to purchase food. So it's hard to get more food in people's hands without investing in the programming that already exists. And I can't give people more money to buy food. So that's the biggest issue.
And was there some, some kind of voucher program for the farmer's market, I believe?
I am working with the farmer's market. I joined the farmer's market board this year and people on WIC and Medicare get food, get vouchers to spend on fresh food at farmer's markets. The state of Indiana, the process to be able to receive those vouchers is not the simplest to go through and only one of our farmers went through the whole program. And they don't sell a ton of produce. It was a small family, like small house, garden, backyard deal and they did run out of food before they could accept all the vouchers. This next year, I'm planning on working with all of our produce vendors earlier in the year to get them all able to accept because Brew Baker, if you've been there, has two large tents and they could serve the whole community.
Rusheville has a farmer's market. I don't, I'm not sure if Greentown does.
They do.
Okay. So I mean, I'd like to expand it to those areas as well, if possible. I think it would be a good use.
And some of the vendors.
Somehow get the information out, I guess, more than anything.
Yeah.
You talked about this grocery store in Greentown closing. I had heard there's a new owner of that. So I'm, that's about all I know. I just heard there was a new owner.
Okay.
Look into that.
Thank you.
Anything else?
Nope.
Thank you for the information.
Great information. Doing a good job.
Alright, we have 4C Health, Dr. Caddell.
Good afternoon, easy commissioners. Actually, in talking with Commissioner Dodd, he had asked for me to come and talk a little bit about this grant today, but also that we have that's also resulting in me making an application for opioid sediment dollars. So I think I told you at the last update I gave that we got a federal grant that for the next five years, we will be doing homeless street outreach in three counties, Cass, Miami and Howard. In the case of Howard, we will have one dedicated street outreach team. That is a pair of a peer recovery services specialist, okay, somebody more in the area of lived experience for substitutes. And then that will be paired with an assertive community treatment team skills trainer. So somebody who works more in the area of adults diagnosed with serious mental illness. Okay, what we know about folks who are experiencing homelessness is that a quarter or if not more experience substitutes and or comorbid mental health disorders. So in that federal grant, for the next five years, we'll have one team that is dedicated to going out based upon steering committee direction to do street outreach here in Howard County. As a part of that grant, then we also have funding for survival backpacks. Okay, so the street outreach teams are going out. They're giving survival backpacks that might have first aid kits, a blanket, gloves, hats, small food items, okay, just to keep people engaged. The goal is to get people into housing, make sure they're well, get them into treatment and also be able to try to connect that to a wellness visit for them, okay? Because many have a lot of physical health concerns too. Now, that grant, our federal grant, also has funds that will allow us to pay for recovery housing vouchers, transportation, when people need it, to care. And then addition, a pocket of funds over the next five years that allow us to cover treatment for them when it is that, you know, they might not have Medicaid or hip or want to be enrolling in any kind of healthcare. So a part of that is tied to then, we're going to be doing that regardless. I mean, that's just a grant we have. Put in an application for opioid settlement dollars to have a second street outreach team. So what that application for the opioid dollars would do was, would position two fully dedicated street outreach teams. One being supported through the opioid dollars, okay, here from Howard County. The other team that I already mentioned would be fully funded through the federal grant. And so that really was, I'm not sure what we, if we have to do anything this evening, but you know, was more Commissioner Dodd said, hey, why don't you come and tell us, you know what I mean, essentially what's happening there?
Yeah, we, and I think we've, I think we've been trying to be creative with this opioid money and do some different things. And we've went down the treatment path a lot and we've went some other ways and you know, we, we, we went as far as to give a little bit of money to volunteer fire departments for some things and things. So this is a new route that we were looking at and considering. I like what you're saying and so forth. Do we ever, when, when you go out and meet these people and your people get them into treatment, how do we find out where they came from?
Well, I mean, that would be part of, we can kind of ask that, right, as a part of the intaking process. It's up to the person who we're talking to to give us that information. We can't force that. But that would be potentially a part of the intake. Now, speaking of, that would be just something we would be doing overall, right? If we decided to do that, that's not something that our federal grant requires to, for information to be gathered. That doesn't mean we can't ask it of the folks that we are doing street outreach with if they are a native of the local area, right, in the surrounding area or whatever that might be.
And then the federal grant that you're doing, how long have you been doing that?
That starts officially, that street outreach is going to start officially in beginning of January.
Really curious about success rates and things like that. So we'll see next year.
You'll see next year and over, at least in the face of the federal grant for the next five years. So when I come back to check in each year like I usually do, I'll make sure to bring some information. The other thing is we can have our project director come in and talk about this, you know what I mean, every once in a while this next coming year to kind of see how things are going.
Federal grant, can I ask the, what kind of monies you're receiving and that, how much or?
So for Cass County, Miami County and Howard County, for the street outreach teams across all areas, we also have funding for a recovery housing coordinator who's attached to Sergeant Place here in town. And then all of the funds to cover the treatment and the survival backpacks. And then also, we have, we're going to be doing a contract with Area Five to help with housing navigation in Cass and Miami. That's a total of five hundred thousand each year.
Okay. Alright, thank you.
Okay, okay, great.
And now, moving on to claims reports.
One million ninety thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-one cents.
I'll second that. All fair say aye? Aye, that's passed. Yep. Next payroll expense.
One million ninety thousand six hundred and eleven dollars and ninety-one cents.
Second, all fair say aye? Aye? Operating claims.
One million seven hundred and seventeen thousand seventy-three dollars and fifty-nine cents.
I'll second it and all fair say aye? Aye? Pass? Claims to ratify. Claim monthly reports.
None.
None? Any grants? All roll. Alright. Everything back to you. Okay, County Attorney.
I have one contract for your consideration with the treasures department. This is with a company called Three Plus One. It's for analysis of our liquidity and investments. I reviewed the contract. The contract is in order. So we just need signature on the acts if you want to approve.
Something new I want.
I would move to table that.
She had presented it at the last commissioner.
Okay to table? You okay with that on?
Yes.
Alright, I'll second his motion to table it. All fair say aye?
Aye.
Aye. Table until the next meeting.
That's all I have.
You saw? Ms. Bishop Finsky. I have nothing. Public comment. Mr. Simone, I see him back with his hand up. Don't knock the chief up.
How are you guys tonight? This afternoon, whatever. Brad Simone, Eastern Howard County. First of all, you know, I like coming to these meetings. Whenever you come to these meetings here, people talk, you learn something. Especially when you back here says, we got a food problem in Greentown. And we're considering putting solar panels on farm ground. Doesn't make any sense. But anyways, two weeks, well, week and a half ago on a Thursday, same night as the GOP up in Stampede event. There was a solar meeting over in Muncie, Indiana. Put on by the Center for Energy Education. That group is a 501(c)(3) organization and they go out to educate governments, schools, children, realtors, all kinds of things, right, to say how good this stuff is. Well, there was a recording that was put out on Facebook of somebody from this area who was speaking at that event. How things are going over here. Someone asked you guys, is this all done and said, approved through the process? That's what I thought. Okay, can I play you something? One second here. Turn my volume up.
Solar farms start to come online, you know, announcement period over the couple of years, what does it look like? And so this is Greentown, Indiana. The next part to the question is, this two-year period, they are all now through the approval process. So the whole entire two-year, both of these companies were going through the very public process of here we are, this is what we want to do, getting their approvals, okay? And so everybody knew where they were going, the, the, the areas were designated, all public, everybody just went, anybody that bought a house in those areas knew where the solar panels were going to be and what was happening. They're going to be moving into construction, my guess is, over the next three to six months.
So I heard, I don't know if you recognize that voice or not. I sure did. He used to sit right there in that chair. So he said this is through, both projects are through the, all the way through the approval process and we're going to see construction in the next three to six months. So now what we're, what's happened is my phone now has been getting calls all the time, just like, you know, commissioners do. And people are saying, you know what I think's going on? I said, what? They said, I think this whole thing is nothing but a horse and pony show. This plane commission, the drains board, all this through the commissioner, this is already rubber stamped. That's what it's sounding like. So we hope that's not the case. We hope you guys do the right thing, but I'm just showing you what's going on out there, what people are saying and are trying to influence governments to not protect property values in their ordinances. Which that's not right. That's a different, different time for me to talk about that one, but I just wanted to point that out. That's what's being said. So we are being told, there's people being told, it's past all the process and we're going to be building in three to six months. Okay? Alright, thanks guys. Have a good night.
For that information. Any other public comment? Any public comment? None seen? I'll second that. Fair say aye? Aye, we're adjourned.